...
As the Chairman, I move that the Board certified that the best of each Board member's knowledge on public business softly exempted from opening meeting requirements was discussed, and only matters identified in the convening motion were discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
My motion is second. Any discussion? Will you call the rule of abstain? Call the rule, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Waymack?
Yeah.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Abstain.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Now we're going to our work session. I think we have folks here from Prince George. Anyway, to just speak to it. Or, Mr. Stone. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Whitney. After the success of the June 2017 Public Private Partnership Agreement between the County, Prince George Industrial Development Authority, and Prince George Electric Cooperative Enterprises LLC, attached tonight's proposal to enter into a second agreement with similar parameters to provide fiber to the home to rural Prince George County. Staff is presenting a redlined version of the 2017 original agreement that has been adjusted to meet the needs of the second phase of the project. If approved by the Board, staff is requesting formal adoption on May 12, followed by a specially called Prince George Industrial Development Authority meeting on May 20 for consideration of this agreement. We now have with us Mr. Casey Logan, CEO of Prince George Electric Cooperative. Talk a little bit about the project for your consideration tonight. This is a million-dollar taxable bond that was already and secured by the county. With that, I'll turn over to Mr. Logan. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, for your information, there is an adjustment to the, to the contracts that you have received. Prince George Electric Co-op changed their bond council.
Go ahead.
Changed the bond council, and that has been reflected in some of the agreements.
It's on page five. The player, Brian Law Farm used to represent us, and now Williams Mullin is the corporate count.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the Board, Mr. Ashcraft. We entered into an agreement with Prince George County back in 2017 to do something very similar, and I was happy to say that it was a success. We completed the project way ahead of schedule, and we are able to serve over 700 members right now in Prince George County with high-speed fiber-to-home broadband availability. So tonight, I want to go through what we're going to call the Prince George County Phase 2 project, and speak a little bit about that and answer any questions you guys might have about what the million-dollar grant would be funding for. Up here to page two. This is some of the statistics that you might have all seen before, but in America, 37 billion people feel like the high-speed broadband internet in Virginia.
Hello? Yes, somebody got it.
I don't know how I got that number.
Okay. And in Virginia, that's over 700,000 people who lack access, and 70% of the residents of Prince George County, that's about 6,400 residents of Prince George County, lack access. And that is slightly down from 20% based off of 2016 study. Part of the reason that's come down is from the efforts that Worldband or subsidiary has done to provide access to residents of Prince George County. It made that number steadily decline here since this was done in 2016. Current options, I won't spend much time on this, but basically if you don't have a means of broadband internet access, you basically use satellite or cell phone coverage. And in today's day and age, especially now during the COVID-19 situation, everybody's working from home, it's not reliable, nor is it passing speed needed for people to do their job or for students to do online learning and things like that. For the Phase 1, which we talked about earlier for the first million dollars, we connected to date approximately 780 homes in Prince George County. And fiber to the home is currently available to over 1,800 homes. So we have a take rate that's a little bit lower than 50%, but it's been a really good asset to have in the communities. Hosting the highest take rates in any other communities we serve throughout our territory in Southeastern Virginia. So the residents here are really excited to have it. We're continuing to hook up, you know, more and more homes every day. The demand is still there, and it just, a lot has to be said to this Board for allowing us to do that back in 2017. We've made fiber to the home available for a lot of the county buildings. We include the Central Wellness Center, the Prince George Emergency Crew Building, Burrowsville Fire Department, the new fire department on Moody Road, and the Burrowsville Library. In addition, our Phase 1 project, we've been able to, because of the Phase 1, we've been able to submit an application to serve all of the Prince George County schools with a secure wide-area network as well as internet connectivity. We worked through the E-Rate program that the government has and submitted our application. Of course, we haven't heard back from it yet because of the COVID-19 and the pandemic that's going on, but we did submit a pretty strong application for the school board, and we're hoping that we can be successful. And if that happens, we'll provide all of the Prince George County schools with a secure, high-speed link that they need to make sure all the students can do the work that they need to do. In addition, we also hosted the congressional roundtable with Prince George County at the Central Wellness Center where we had
Thank you for calling Comprehensive Pain Management Center. Our office is currently closed. Normal business hours.
Yeah, we had Representative Flivern and Representative Spanberger there for that. So that was a huge success for the county. We also deployed fiber to the industrial park. Service Center Metals became our first industrial member to take fiber service from us, and that was a huge success for us. And we also applied for BADI funding with Prince George County. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we spun up some hotspots for the communities that free for the community to use. They drive up, they acknowledge, they sign on page, and then anybody can use the service for business, for school, or whatever needs that they might have. And those hotspots that we spun up are at the Central Wellness Center, South Elementary School, J.J. Moore Middle School, and MB Clemens Junior High School. The next slide here, just give you a breakdown of our rate structure. That's changed a little bit in 2019. We now offer a below $50 package. We're trying to make sure that we're meeting all the residents in any kind of income levels they may have. So it's a pretty diverse package that we offer throughout all of our tiers, but we wanted to make sure that not only someone who loves to play video games could obtain it, but also someone who maybe has a little bit tighter monthly income can also obtain the service at a lower rate. So those are what we offer to our memberships today. And 25 megabits is our lowest tier, but it still meets the requirements from the FCC to be broadband. Okay, the next slide here, proposed Phase 2. Proposed Phase 2, Worldband will make available fiber to the home and service to over 500 homes located in Prince George County. And I did provide maps here. The maps would have made the PowerPoint slide way too big to transmit over email, so I did go back and we verbally talked about it here. On the areas in which we will pass in the intersection of Pine Grove and Route 10, we're going to follow Route 10 east to a 0.110th of a mile west of Boyn Star Road. This will make fiber to the home available to approximately 100 county residents to businesses. We're also going to go from the Surrey and Prince George County line to a point one mile past intersection Route 10 and Chipos, as well as Long Chipos Road. This will make fiber to the home available to approximately 55 residents. So this is, if you're looking at the county, this is kind of the northeastern part of the county. Areas along Ellis Road, Long Oak Road, Lebanon Road, Fox Hollow, Williams Lane, will make fiber to the home available to approximately 42 residents. Areas along Rewani Road, John Road, Gossie Road, Horseshoe Road, Pressy Lane, Turkey Ridge, and this will make fiber to the home available to approximately 30 residents. This is now going to get to the southwest part of the county. We're going to also serve areas from Route 35 to Templeton Road to the intersection of Lansing and Halifax Roads to make fiber to the home available to 132 residents. We continue along Route 35 and Templeton Road to the Sussex County line. This will make fiber to the home available to approximately 40 residents. And the areas around Route 35 and Templeton Road to the KOA Camp Brown, this will make fiber to the home available to approximately 14 county residents and three businesses. And through that, the KOA has been a huge opponent to having it there. They see it as an asset to their business, especially when there's a lot of stage for construction purposes, so we're excited about being able to get down there to them to serve that part of the county. And that's, and that's really it on where we're going to focus. I don't mean that'd be the only places we go. If we can progress through the school and be awarded that grant, then we can also build off of that infrastructure to serve more residents in the county that we might pass. So I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to talk here tonight and talk about the Phase 2 project that we're looking for the residents of Prince George County and ask if I have any questions for me.
I just want to make your comment, and Mr. Brown could probably relate to it better than I because that's his world, but I just not heard positive comments about the hotspots that you've set up for folks during these hard times with everything going on. Like you said, there's a lot of students that weren't able to get online unless they didn't get online, and it's a very important aspect of education.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We want to make sure we're taking care of our communities as much as we can as well during these times. Other comments?
Good, thank you. I hear that's a positive place. Since we made the first step, people are very satisfied as people down Route 10 are waiting, eager to wait. So I wish you guys luck, success.
Mr. Waymack, any comments? You good, Mr. Waymack?
I don't think that Jennifer. Hello?
Mr. Waymack, are you there?
I'm fine, thank you so much. Okay, well, when this thing first came out, there was a lot of skepticism. Could we make the 500 homes? What happened if it didn't work? What happened if y'all decided to get out of it? And, you know, questions that would come up with any new project. But as we see it progress and the attention that it has, I mean, all over Virginia, and possibly going to go further than just the lines of Virginia, but y'all should be very proud of what y'all, the product that y'all put out and the recognition that y'all have received on this. And, and many years that we made investments and, you know, put actually in dollars up, you know, hoping for good recognition and good things to come to the citizens. This was one that would really put a stamp on for the future and the accomplishment of Prince George County, what we do. So congratulations to your people. Very good.
Okay.
So, just hold on. But where we are, do you have any comments about the rule of broadband that we're assisting with Prince George Electric Co-op to put it into town?
How do you do it?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
I'm just, sorry, you're part of our, our test.
We're all learning through this. This has nothing to do with your role. We're all, we're all learning through the bandit.
We don't have any slappin'. Okay, thank you, Mr. Waymack. I doubt you have my phone again. So but Jimmy, how long have you been here? You can carry us up.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, with your permission, we'd like to work with our partners and bring back final agreement for your consideration on May 12.
I think we're all in accord with that. I'm sure I'm good with that. You're all good with that, yes, sir, and good luck and very bad.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your report. And actually, we're going to welcome Mr. Hogan to the podium to talk to us about some utility matters under tab three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board, Mr. Ashcraft. I appreciate the opportunity to give you update on these several projects that are ongoing. First, I want to talk about Apex River Water Take, a water intake permit that we've been working with DEQ now since April of last year. We'll use a bit of our application. Today, we really have gotten just one significant comment that came from the Bureau of Green Resources Commission. Their comment was that they're using partake in a very expensive study to determine the impact on wild fish habitat at that magnetic river. We have talked with our consultants here that they're mucking us together with Chesterfield's requirements. We believe apart from Chesterfield, this requirement will not fall on Prince George. We're working with our consultant to form a letter to respond to the VMRC. We would like to have the chairman of the Board to sign that letter after it's drafted and then review, and hopefully that requirement will be fully that everybody can because right now in their letter, they did tie us to Chesterfield's request as well and looking at the ultimate facts of both plans versus this power.
Did you understand that, Mr. Waymack, you answered that? Sent a letter to our consultants that would ask that restriction, that their suggestion be removed.
I didn't hear what he said. What restriction is that?
So currently, they're requiring us to use, what's required is a hydrodynamic modeling study, which will allow them to understand the habitat of the fish habitat in the automatic river. When we, part of their requirement was, was we work together with Chesterfield to do this study. We feel that we don't need to do this as part of our firm alone. Our withdrawal permit that we're requesting is so insignificant, would have no impact, and therefore, we're requesting the chairman to sign a letter in response to the request to remove this requirement.
All right.
Were you able to hear that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Well, you don't have a problem with that, right?
No.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we'll have that letter drafted for your review by the middle of next week. So the Blackwater River wastewater discharge permit, we submitted an application in October of 2019. Although there have been multiple agencies that are reviewing this and requesting to get a 2 million gallon per day discharge, eventually going from 2 million gallons to 4 to 6 million gallons per day for a wastewater treatment plant. And we're just looking for the permit. We're not looking to build yet. We're just getting that authorization to discharge to Blackwater River. To date, we've had one comment about DEQ has indicated that our application that we're requesting meets the limits that would not harm the swamp. And therefore, DEQ has indicated they wanted to draft a permit for us. So we are anticipating to get a draft permit from them by the end of this week. After that permit is in hand, we'll have the consultant that did the work on this come in and do his presentation through the Board. As you recall, there are a lot of comments from the public concerned about a wastewater treatment plant. He'll come and talk about the application and the permit itself, as well as address a lot of those questions that were asked. I did jot down all those questions that he would prepare to answer those questions as well.
I'm sure that would be welcome.
Route 461 waterline extension, we have advertised that project for bid. It went out on April 14. The bids are due back on May 14. We have been undergoing, getting easement acquisitions for quite some time now. I believe I indicated in your report, we've got about 75% of those done. We're now just down to one property. That's where a little over 90% now. That one property may require some additional measures to get this project completed. We have not been able to reach the person, and they do not live in the county. The destruction that's at this address appears to be abandoned, so we don't have any means of contacting them. Tried multiple methods of getting in touch with this property owner, but no avail. So we may need to look at additional process to try to get that easement fee there. But that may become in the future through the Board's consideration as far as any type of land taken or.
Thank you for the information.
Route 156 waterline extension, we have now received VDOT's approval, the Health Department's approval. We are waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers approval as well. We're looking for a nationwide permit. We just notified late last week that they are no longer issuing that permit. Our consultants have quickly got on the phone with the Board and determined that our next path forward is to be to apply for an individual permit. But based on the amount of work that we have to do that disturbs any wetlands, we have been able to work it out before that no permit's going to be necessary at all. We're going to reroute our one portion of the water main around it. There will be no disturbance of the wetlands. So at this point now, we have all approvals that we need. Therefore, we're going to be working with our procurement office to get these out within the next few weeks. So those will be due back around the first or middle of June. They'll be looking a couple of months after that to start constructing them as well. The easement acquisition process on that one is about to step down already as far as verbal agreements. The challenge on both these projects of getting the property owners is to get have these signed with the public as a witness. So we're trying to offer a method for them to do that here with one of our staff. So that's really the only obstacle in the way right now to get those easement acquisitions, a few for approval at a future meeting. I'm going to skip, instead of talking about Route 10 real quick, let's talk about the Temple Avenue Tank and Booster Station. We just completed our consultant, WW, so he did a preliminary engineering report to determine what type of project could be done to boost our capacities at the South Point Business Park. As you may know, we're trying to at least get 2 million gallons per day of water to our business park to serve the future growth of that park. Right now, we do still have about 300,000 gallons per day available, but any future tenant that wants to come in there could use that. One person could use that if they come in anytime soon. Now, this project could certainly solve a lot of different issues as far as fire pressure as well as our capacity. The proposal indicates that we would need to build a new booster station and tank over on the River Road area and the Potters Dock area. Right now, we do have some low-pressure zones based on where our current pump station's located over by Middle Road. So where we get our water across Temple Avenue Bridge, there's an area between that Temple Avenue Bridge and our booster station that's a low-pressure zone because that water can be inserted. Those cars would be served directly by the RLO system. So we would relocate that booster station, the decommissioned existing one, and locate it over in the River Road area. And therefore, we'd be able to control all the pressures and the flow to the entire county by building by this one project. In addition, we are actually looking at possible ways to eliminate other projects. I don't have all the information just yet. There is the Food Lion upgrades that we're also working on right now that I didn't mention yet. But if we are able to meet the flow demands by that one project, we may delay or put off that project completely as far as those upgrades. We're still studying that right now to determine if we can meet those firework demands at the line distribution center. All that, as you said, I want to go back up now to Route 10 because if we do build that station at Temple Avenue, like I mentioned, it will solve a lot of other issues. So Route 10, when we do this preliminary engineering report to serve Jordan on the James, Beachwood Manor, and Rivers Edge, we initially thought we were going to take a booster station and new tank to serve that area. This preliminary engineering report indicates that we can extend the water line out there to help it water main to serve those areas and still meet the existing demands of those, a new subdivision as well as the demands at South Point Business Park. So we can do that now without a new booster station and tank. And any new development came in, we can either build a Temple Avenue Tank and Booster Station, or we can require development to begin to build a new booster station and tank in the Jordan, in the Route 10 area. So we have options there. So the Temple Avenue Tank and Booster Station is critical. Number one, it allows us to really control everything that we're getting from our lot to serve our customers. It also allows us to build a substantial amount of storage for us to not only fight fires, but if there's something that does happen at Temple Avenue Bridge that hasn't passed, we have added the volume of water to serve our public until those repairs can be, can take place.
Are we limited in what amount of water we can get from our lot? I was, they would only allow us a certain percentage of their total intake.
Right now, it's kind of, it's not written, it's not, although there are, our costs are based on allocation that we get from our lot. It's at 2.69 million gallons per day. There is no limit of what we can pull from as long as our lot can produce it. Right now, it's first pump, first serve, since there is no true allocation set for East Locale. I'm not sure if that answered your question or not, but yes, we can pull more to 2.69 if necessary, but we, right now, we don't anticipate going beyond that 2.69 limit unless we do some massive development. And then again, we still are looking at that water treatment plant in the same area where we would put the Temple Avenue Tank and Booster Station. So if we do go well beyond that limit, we would build that plant and that Tank Booster Station still be served by that.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong, we had some discussions about this several years back with the throttle valve, the aircraft on that board. Couldn't get agreement to get them to open the throttle valve for us. Unfortunately, we're delayed, and Chesterfield's leaps and bounds. I mean, I get it, they're growing, they want all the work to get, and that's also why they're going after them. Because they're already buying more from other people than they did besides our lot to service their customers.
That's correct.
So that's what I was thinking when you asked that question. Is it technically a defined limit? No, but it's a physical limit. And that's, that's all my concern is. We're going to build, you know, something to handle and give us more capacity, but it's a capacity there to have.
There is definite capacity to be, to be had. We can definitely grab more. Right now, we're somewhat limited by the pipeline that's behind our current booster station. Which, right now, for our master plan, it says we can be our limit to about 1 million gallons per day. That's about all we can physically pull through that pipeline. But we've put our booster station on the right location. We can start increasing that up quickly to 2 million to 2,000,000 easily.
Yeah, I'm not in any way questioning the proposal. I'm in favor of the proposal. I just wanted to make sure. I don't want to try to propose something we can't use. We can't get. I do have one more question, if you're asking. Our would put, they put in, they put in new equipment here, what, a couple of years back? Get a better handle on how they were reading the flows. But they're also governed by how much they can pull. Because at one time, But they're also governed by how much they can pull, because at one time, they, they can't drain, drain that area out there where you can almost walk across it. So they, there is, do they happen to know how many available gallons they would have for whoever, based on what level they need to try to maintain?
You saying the level of?
As far as gallons, how many gallons of excess they may have to share with whoever, and still maintain that residual.
And on the same note, before you answer his, he made a comment that I was thinking about, where are on the last leg of that pipeline? And when you made a comment that they can produce as much water as we can stand, first come, first served. If Chesterfield is the first one on the receiving end of that excess water, can they possibly suck all that water out of Chesterfield prior to us getting to us? And would we ever be first come, first served if the demand is going to be taken of all the excess water that they produce?
So the answer is yes, we would still be able, the way the hydraulics works, Chesterfield has a large demand, and yes, we would have a less demand at a particular moment in time. But most of, most of our tanks are over, are filled overnight, just like most other localities. So the great demand being pulled at different times. Chesterfield, their demand is first thing in the morning, so they're pulling almost their entire demand first thing in the morning, they're filling all of their tanks. Once their tanks are full, then we can start pulling whatever we need as well.
So we get the leftovers Chesterfield don't use?
Well, what I want to call leftovers is we can't pull as much while they're full. We can pull some, but not, if they're opened up full, they open their valve up full, and they're pulling as much as they can, we can pull a little, but not pulling much. But all that to be said is, our system should be operating independently of that anyways. Meaning, we should already have a system in place, and we do, where our tanks are filling, and by the time that Chesterfield comes on, we're safe. So we shouldn't be fighting Chester.
Now, does it change their hours of operation or when they come on? Or does O.R.L. pick their operating hours?
No, Chesterfield could change it, no doubt about it.
If it means them getting all the excess water to help them.
That would be coming back to, to the O.R.L. board and trying to work that, work that out as far as how the whole system works now, that's O.R.L.'s issue to ensure that we get what we're, what we need at any particular time, so.
So how do we guarantee ourselves to get extra, can we, can we put in them? At their meeting, was it, we're going to change our downs to this amount, and this is what we need, make sure we get this?
Then it would have to be requested by O.R.L. at some point, but right now, there is the ability to use it. So if we need it, it's there to use, and when I say that, that we're, we're allocated 2.69, but we're actually pulling 3, there's no penalty to draw more, if that makes sense, so there is a penalty. And then there is capacity in the O.R.L. plant to pull more right now.
It's just that first come, first served worries me, because Chesterfield may be that first come, first served, and nobody else gets any of that excess water provision.
Very well could be that in the future.
That's fair. Right, that, go back to the item one, that you talked about, that there's a river water intake permit that we're working on, that would alleviate some of that concern.
That would alleviate all that concern.
And we've, and we've taken the first step in support of this, we're trying to work, look, in the future. Because that's today's demands, today's estimates, 10 years down the road, you can change.
I apologize, I never answered your question at this point, I forgot.
I forgot what it was.
Okay. I'm good, I'm good, I already knew, I, I can answer my own question, I was just asking for backup.
But to go back to Branders Bridge, this project would be in lieu of Branders Bridge. We could not come to an agreement on Branders Bridge, therefore, we are moving forward with this project. We would still need your authorization to go towards design, but we went to the preliminary engineering report phase, and that's where we're at at this point. So we would need to come back and, based on our priorities, with our future budget, right now, we're still determining what those priorities may be, but this will still be a higher priority project moving forward, especially getting the design done, and hopefully there's a future stimulus bill, maybe of receiving grants to help pay for this project, as well as the wastewater treatment plant project, which would be great.
And you said you were going to go back to Route 10?
I did, I did touch on Route 10, again, that's, that's the reason you wanted to go back. Yeah, Temple Avenue is the one I wanted to, of course, you came back to Route 10, just to say that if you do build the Temple Avenue Tank and Booster Station, we may be able to relieve any, almost any issues with Jordan on the James, the Route 10 service area. And then we would allow development as it occurs to help fund any future infrastructure.
Questions? Is there any questions?
No, not right now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, you deserve. I think Mr. Walton is up there, is, is Walton going to give us a report on the elementary school if I have to go down?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening, ma'am.
So even, I wanted to give you an update on the elementary school design committee. As you may be aware, the school system has asked a committee representing school administrators, speakers, principals, as well as some county reps and school board members to work on the design of the new elementary school. So the committee members make up, are made up of the design team, from mostly architects, as well as 23 other individuals, including those listed from the school, as well as representatives from county parks and rec, public safety and community development. What the committee was charged with doing is refining the options for the school plan that were developed by a steering committee previously. And they want the committee to work with the architects to look at the program design capacity, the floor plan options, as well as the site development options. The committee is met twice by Zoom, 417 and 424. And their next meeting is scheduled for this Friday. So the first meeting centered around the design parameters, which is typically called programming. And the design is based on using the Middle Road site. The capacity was set by the steering committee, and that is at 894 students, including pre-K.
Wow. I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. The programming and the basic designs were developed previously by that smaller steering committee. So the architects had developed a two-story design concept similar to North at approximately 96,000 square feet. The architect at the first meeting had four different floor plan options and four or five, no, it was actually six site plan options. That's what this committee started with.
What did, what's the square footage of North, do you know?
No, sir. I do know the capacity of North, the design capacity. 778 students, including pre-K, 748 without.
And was there, as you go on this design, I'm sorry to cut you off, you got 60 minutes, but were they given a budget number of not exceed 30 million, 31 million? Okay, 34.2, is that the number they're working on in this design?
That's the budget, they, they mentioned that a budget had been established by the steering committee, but it was not shared with the town.
They're a million dollars into that budget, but not to exceed 34.2.
That's the last number I remember.
About 894 makes me think they're going to do that. Anyway, sorry.
Okay.
Continue.
The last item shows you the, the design principles that were ranked as the most important by the steering committee. So results to date, the tentative schedule for design, bid and construction has been laid out of the multiple floor plans and site layouts that were presented to the design committee. We've narrowed that down to two floor plan options and one site layout. Both of the floor plan options will fit on the site, and the architect is working on some revisions to the floor plans, and will bring both of those floor plans on that site layout to the committee this Friday. There are some road improvements that we have discussed from day one that need to be done at all the sites that were considered. So there is a separate meeting scheduled with VDOT, the road improvement options and some details and hopefully some cost estimates. I've asked Dr. Petticoat to include me on that, and she has agreed to that, so I'm just waiting on, on hearing that schedule. The next meeting for the full committee, as I mentioned, is scheduled for this Friday, May 1. And that's when we should be seeing the, the final two options on floor plans and the final site layout. The tentative schedule that was shared with the committee is, is for construction documents to be completed by December. We have the bid contracts done in February of 2021, and we start construction in March with the opening in September of 2022. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments, or anything that you'd like me to look at for the meeting on Friday.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walton, let's go along with road improvements. And, yeah, did we, did we make the timeline, we just COVID, I think, did we, were we able to make the timelines, submit the paperwork for them?
I'm not sure what the, we, the county did not do that. We've got no information on proposed road improvements.
But we were supposed to apply for some, like that dog bone that we ran about.
Oh, the smart scales, yes, all the smart scales, yes, sir, the smart scale. Yeah, the smart scale projects were submitted, they did do an extension for a couple of weeks, and yes, just the way it submitted all of three of the three projects.
Okay, great, smart scale. A question for you. Well, I'm kind of on board with Mr. Carl, I'm a little concerned, C and E 94, when the number that we've been operating with was 850, and then we're above that, and to me, that's got to add cost. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned with some of the information I see.
So my question, I was just concerned, were they giving a not to exceed number that we all agreed upon? Which, was that 34.2? I hate to see a school president.
It could be an assumption on my part, but I had assumed that was kind of the ceiling number. I guess until we talked to the schools to figure out what's what going up, may not cost a bunch of spread now, so.
I will see.
And a house that, that appears out, it may not appear out anywhere, I see it's a lot of structure to scale.
I'd be happy to see what information I can find out this Friday, if you'd like.
Just way back, because you heard it in the presentation.
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Walton, does the current plan have a courtyard?
But one of the two options we're looking at does have a courtyard.
Okay. Although the courtyard is very nice, it gets a lot of light. It's never taken care of, I know the one at North always looks awful, it's nothing but a bunch of weeds. And it isn't conducive to a good look of a new school. So I would ask the committee that if they choose the courtyard, please make sure that they're going to take care of it.
Yes, ma'am, this way back, we, that actually was discussed by the design committee last week. And at North, they had removed a lot of that landscape area that was getting hard to take care of, they replaced it with hardscape materials. And they feel like if they go with the courtyard design for the new elementary school, they would follow that same direction, that it's not necessarily landscaped areas, but it's hardscape areas with seating arrangements for outside classroom activities and congregation areas, not necessarily a landscaped areas. The courtyard, as you mentioned, is very important to have the ability for natural light to come into rooms that would normally just be an interior room. So it does actually give you, you know, four more exterior walls that allow these classrooms and spaces to have natural light.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, we both look forward to future. And keep in mind, we like to maybe hear their thoughts on that budgetary situation. Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. As she always does, they do, they do. Cool numbers out, this quick, man, 32.9. That was supposed to be working in. Okay, I'm saying, I guess, aware of that number.
32.9.
All right, thank you, I was saying, I thought it was on the report somewhere.
Does that count for me? It does, I'm going to.
Right, okay.
Now, that number was, you're right, that number was out there. I didn't have the request, maybe you.
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks.
32.9, 32 and a half, thank you. Anything else for the work session? No, sir, that's all we had. Before we start the regular board meeting, we'll be in recess for 7:00 P.M. 7:05, and we'll call for a regular meeting back to order for the Prince George Board of Supervisors. And first thing we'll do is have our invitation live up to Row, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening just to say thank you. Heavenly Father, we know that going through this whole COVID-19 situation, Heavenly Father, we know that, you know, we need to put our trust and faith in you, Heavenly Father, and we ask you this evening to, to protect all that may be involved. Protect all of our, our first responders, our, our fire, EMS, police, all of our, we ask you to bless all of our county employees, all of our county residents, as we all go through this whole COVID-19 situation. Heavenly Father, we also ask you this evening to watch over us as we go through our normal business tonight, and as we go into another budget work session meeting tomorrow. Also, Heavenly Father, we ask you to, to watch over our county administrator as he goes through each and every day to lead this county in, in the best possible direction. And Heavenly Father, we ask all this in your name, amen.
Amen. As superlatives, we lead us in our place.
What leaders decide, the United States of America, and you're the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, we have public comments, this is where the public can speak with us. They have four minutes to speak, unless you're speaking for a group, if you're speaking for a group, name the group that you're speaking for, and you have seven minutes. Other than that, we have some people to speak individually, and then we may have some to speak electronically, that correct? Come forward to give your name, your address, and let us know what you speak about.
Good evening, my name is Greg Taffler, I'm the local Prince George Professional Firefighters President. Tonight, we're just going to cover a couple of topics that the fellow employees would like to bring forward to y'all. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Ashkaff and Mr. Wood. My name is Greg Taffler, I'm the president of Prince My name is Greg Taffler. I'm the president of Prince George Professional Firefighter Association, Local four nine nine four. I represent twenty-three of the full-time career firefighter medics employed with Prince George. As all of you are aware, Sunday I sent you all a request meeting with you to discuss possible misunderstandings, comments that have been caused some concern with our organization. Tonight, I wanted to take a brief moment to address a couple of those topics that we have may not been able to meet on. It provides some information to our department. Career firefighter medics are a vital role in Prince George Fire EMS response to citizens and visitors in Prince George County. We operate out of four fire EMS stations to provide what is known as cross staff, all hazard response. We respond in addition with the volunteer companies to provide the best level of protection and service possible. Many times, our members are the first on scene of emergencies, both fire and emergency medical. While it may seem that our job is limited in nature, be assured that when we are not responding to emergencies, we're performing a variety of other duties to include fire training, EMS training, equipment maintenance, station maintenance, public education with our schools and citizens, and countless community events, building pre-plans, district training, and much more. Recently, our department has been plagued with accusations, news articles, and investigations that have damaged the reputation and the morale of our entire department. We want the board and public to know that we recognize Prince George Fire EMS is not without faults or problems, but I would employ you to find the department that does not have it. Our members are one hundred percent dedicated to make fire EMS the best department possible. We are here for our community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Most of our members have not only chosen Prince George Fire and EMS as their career, but Prince George County is where they live and raise their families. One of the most concerning topics from last night's, last week's work session was the discussion of the funding of the last safer grant that currently employs five full-time firefighter medics. As all of you are aware, our two hundred and eighty-two square mile county currently runs over four thousand four hundred calls a year, with career staff responding on ninety-one percent of those calls. We currently have nine career staff on duty with only two members at each staff station. Failing to continue to fund a safer grant would significantly impact the response provided by fire EMS in a negative way. We are asking the board to continue to fund those positions next year when the grant expires. Additionally, we are encouraging the administration and board to consider greater safer grants to ensure the safety of the members in the community. Another topic that was discussed was Zoll A D E K G monitors. Currently, the department has eight Zoll E-series monitors that were purchased beginning in two thousand seven up until two thousand thirteen, making majority of those monitors thirteen years old as of today. According to the FDA, these monitors are deemed past their end of life and should be removed from service prior to February third, twenty twenty-one. The C I P committee placed, replacing five of these monitors in upcoming years, but not funding replacement of this life-saving equipment will result in delayed care for our public. Another topic of concern is the funding for our deputy director position. Currently, our administration is severely understaffed with a vast amount of workload that is required. Most of our current officers function not only as a station-level supervisor and leader, but also have significant amount of administrative projects and tasks assigned. The amount of work and coordination that is required with many areas we must address is just far too much for one person, the director. Lastly, we have been short-staffed by three positions for over several months. We understand that an investigation that has taken place, however, no other information has been given as when the promotional process will be completed and when the vacant positions will be filled. Unlike many other departments, we operate daily at minimum staffing, meaning if someone does not come to work, our position is vacant. We must fill that with overtime or a part-time personnel. Our members spend one-third of their lives living, working, and training together, responding to emergencies, as well as all the other things that go on day to day. With the constant vacancies, it makes it difficult to have any consistency and perform together as a team when the team is a very new shift every single day. We encourage the administration to fill the vacancies as soon as possible. In closing, I want to thank all of you for your time. I'd like to meet with each of you in the near future. There are additional areas of concern that we feel can be resolved, communication and understanding from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, is there anyone else in the hall that would like to speak?
That's everyone in the hall.
Just everyone in the hall. So, good evening, Bill's iPad Pro. Welcome to the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Please state your name and address, and you will have four minutes to speak to the Prince George County Board of Supervisors. We hope we've unmuted you. Go right ahead.
Yes, yes, you have unmuted me and I'm able to hear. This is William Steele. I live at nine nine two one County Line Road down here in Disbytana. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mrs. Waymac. Mrs. Waymac joined us in a community video conference last evening. Uh, she provided us with some information that was very helpful to the community here and gave us her ideas. So I wanted to thank her. I would take a moment to thank her for that. Um, and I did not thank Mr. Webb and Mr. Brown prior. They too joined us in a video conference a week ago. And gentlemen, I just wanted to thank you the same time. Mr. Hunter, we're gonna be coming to you next, asking you to join us in a video conference. And I will ask you in person tomorrow night when I come by and sit through the board meeting. During our conference call, our community has taken the time and we have looked at the spending that the county has done. We are shocked at the excessive waste of the one hundred and eleven categories that are on the public record for spending. We were able to find three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of gross waste by this county and administration. If we can find such waste by just looking at it, I'm wondering what the administration can find, if the board would recognize and support Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Webb in their attempt to ask the administration to present a decrement list showing a three percent, five percent, and seven percent cut in government spending. Your board is known to, unfortunately, us in P G County, our board is known as a tax and spend board. With the upcoming problems that we have and the reductions of resources, we are employing that you do not put all these emphasis back on the taxpayer to end up to pay for the shortfall. To correct the shortfall, you, board of directors, you must start doing your job and cutting the waste that the administration presents. We must remember in this county, it's the taxpaying citizens that direct the board, and it's the board that should direct the bureaucrats. But now it seems that the bureaucrats direct the board and you follow suit whatever the, whatever the bureaucrats want. Please change that and start thinking about the taxpayer. We are, and everybody's having problems with C nineteen. A lot of people are financially stressed right now. And for you to come and refuse to reduce the tax rate to where it should be for last year is unacceptable. I know you're still doing budget workshops, so we are asking that you seriously take a look at the waste in government spending, cut the waste, cut the tax rate to the point where it should be of last year, and let's get this county back in to taxpayers and, and protect taxpayers' pocketbook for a change. You refused to reduce the rate last year and gave a windfall to the county administration from the taxpayers. Let's not do the same thing two times in a row. We are monitoring your progress and your procedures through your budget workshops very closely down here in Disbytana. And we will make noise when we, we see that the waste that this government produces every day is not taken care of. So good luck with you and you continue the budget workshop. And we again ask you to, for the first time in the three years that I've been following this, let's start thinking about the taxpayer first and the waste in government, and let's cut it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Please, next, Mr. Stone.
At this time, anyone wishing to raise their electronic hand, they do so on Zoom by going to the lower right and selecting raise hand. If you're on your phone, you may press star nine to raise your hand to speak during the public comment period.
I see no one raising their hand electronically, and I understand there's no one in the hall waiting to speak. So we have, we have opportunity if you want to raise your hand or speak to the board of the public comment. Now it's a tap. Here and now, I will close the public comment. Next thing we have is the adoption of agenda, and again, a motion to adopt the agenda.
Sorry.
Have a motion, go ahead, say it. Second, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here and now, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Waymac?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Next, we have the order of consensus that we, uh, the order of consensus and a kind of motion to accept the word. So move, just bring your motion, Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Webb. Any discussion? Here and now, call the roll, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Waymac?
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, I have no presentation to understand tonight, that's why. Yeah, so we've actually moved into supervisors comments and, just way back, I want to give you the first opportunity, so I won't forget you. So, uh, you have any comments, ma'am?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to all our first responders, all our medical people that are on the front line, and thank you for the citizens of Prince George, too.
And thank you, Ms. Waymac, for your service. Uh, Mr. Carmichael? I'll be very cautious on how I make this comment. And this is just my take on what happened last meeting that got a lot of people concerned about some comments that were made. What I took from the meeting was we were going through a list of items that we were going to choose whether these items were going to be carved out of how they were getting paid for, not carved out of the budget completely, but if the school division's part of the money that they get each year, should some of that money go toward paying for these items? Or should, and the county take full responsibility for it? And that was what the discussion was about. But they said a comment was made that fire and rescue did not provide a service to Prince George County twenty-four seven as police do. That was taken totally out of context from what I've heard sitting up here. That was an example of how we were going to let school officials or the, the money that goes to the school division play part of either both fire, rescue, and police as far as the expenses that it takes to run public safety. Or did they just want to take care of the police costs and not to find rescue and let the county take care of those costs? So whatever comments that were made that were taken, or I don't know how it comes across on Zoom or on the YouTube, but at no time did I hear any board member come across as trying to say fire and rescue did not protect Prince George County twenty-four seven. That was not the intent of the conversation. And I know from being on this for twelve years and as well as working with this group of gentlemen and ladies that we do everything in our power to make sure that fire, rescue, police gets every item that they need to do their job in a professional manner, and we will continue to do that. And we've taken heat for building fire stations and putting them in places that better serve the citizens, but we will continue to make sure we have a strong volunteer and paid um public safety staff. And I have yet to see any member of this board ever vote against giving volunteers or paid public safety staff the tools or the money to do their job. So that's my comment for the night. Thank you, sir. Mr. Webb, comment, sir?
Yeah, I think I will. I wasn't at first, but I think I will. Uh, first, I want to thank the ones that took time to email me or call me. I've always been available. I take calls anytime, night or day. You leave me a message, I get back without even coming with you. But it saddens me that people could take things out of context the way it is and it would run rapid on Facebook and, and think that's okay. And that's fine. That's the world we live in. That's, that's the media people choose to do. But again, I want to thank the people that take time, took time to reach out to me and the ones that know me or know my voting record knows I have always supported fire EMS, police, volunteers, and paid staff. I'm just trying to do the right thing, but we don't have a money tree. There's some hard decisions that have to be made, and this is one of the ones. The ordinance was an example. The building of the new school was also in a car about. That was an example. Every time you take a third of a cent away from something, it takes that much more money to fund something else, or maybe you don't have to fund something else, and that's what that topic was about. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, for your comments. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just also speak on, for a brief moment, on the April twenty-second meeting. Again, the comment that I made and, and Mr. Ashcraft, you were here at the time, there was a question directed to sir about whether safer grants were automatically renewed or, or what the policy was. My statement that I made was only to clarify that safer grants were not an automatic thing for what you, you shared, Mr. Ashcraft. There was no discussion. There was no insinuation made that we were not going to fund safer grants. The safer grant conversation was, as Mr. Carmichael said, the safer grant was only on that list for us to determine whether or not the school would receive, would not receive a carve-out, meaning would they get the forty-some percent revenue share from that budget line item? None of those things that we discussed that night were any decisions whether or not they were gonna be funded or weren't gonna be funded. That is something that we will be discussing more as we go through the budget process tomorrow. So again, I just wanted to clarify. I'll also say I, I want to thank those that did reach out to me and called. I'm a personable person. Get my cell number off of the website. And those that call me and I explain what I said, and I know what I said. I know what I meant. And by no means was there any insinuation made to do away with the safer grants, whether it's this year, next year, or a year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Agnew, Mr. Chairman, since I've already had my turn, but, and, and that's what kind of floored me the most is people thinking that we were going to allow those employees that we had hired under the safer grant to get laid off and not funded. I mean, we've been up here long enough to know the shortages that we have in staffing, and at no time did any member say that we were going to do away with those members and, and not fund it. It was, as Mr. Webb and Mr. Brown said, on what's the best way to fund it, but they were never going anywhere. And I think when we asked the directors to go out and try to get these grants, we already know when we bring these people on board that once the safer grant runs out, it will be our obligation to fund it a hundred percent in the future. And as long as I've been here, we've never, ever not done that, and we're hoping to decide to say their decision. Yep. But we're always, if we hired you on a safety grant, the chances you will always be here is about a hundred percent. All right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and what fellow board members have said, I have to just echo somewhat that, uh, I think it's a lot of misunderstanding of what a carve-out was. And it's somewhat, maybe not clear, but at any rate, no one was intending to cut a position or they were barely trying to figure out the percentage of how we were gonna fund what we were gonna fund. So I, I hate that there was a misunderstanding and any, that meant those people that got upset. And now being clarified, I actually understand. And I think someone was asked, like, does all monitor say? Tonight, uh, we did have a representative from fire explain that the current Zoll monitors will be outdated uh in early next year in February of twenty-one. So we, we know there are necessary pieces of equipment to give the service to the public that we need. So I'm sure we will do everything in our power to, of course, fund these items. So with that said, thank you all and comments of our county administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, those that are watching electronically. The county administration continues to monitor very closely all the activities involving the pandemic and how it's affecting our community as well as our employee base. As of five thirty and six o'clock this evening, uh, we have thirty-four confirmed cases in, uh, in the county. We, uh, receive the update every, every day. We, uh, receive the update every, every day from the greater health district, and they are monitoring, uh, not only the number of cases, but those that have been hospitalized and also those who have passed. And Prince George is one of three localities remaining in the district that have not had fatalities as a result, as a result of the pandemic. We remain grateful for that, uh, because that stays that way. We are encouraging, uh, anyone in the community, as I said, I believe, uh, two weeks ago, to reach out to someone who may be affected by this pandemic other than just having the virus. We have a number of, uh, of people in our county who are now applying for unemployment benefits that have never applied before. Today, it's a thousand and thirty-eight residents who have filed reclaim since April the eighteenth. That's one in ten Prince George workers who are unemployed, out of a workforce of almost fifteen thousand people. And that number, I have a feeling, is going to continue to grow a little bit until we can level this, uh, level this off and go back to, uh, to our business and we'll be able to. Secondly, we have a number of, of applications that are going through social services that, from folks who have never applied for benefits before. Three hundred and thirty-seven new applications since April the twenty, or as of April the twenty-fourth. First application started coming in sometime around, uh, mid-March. And they are, uh, applying for SNAP benefits, which we know is the former food stamp program, Medicaid, and TANF insurance program. Our social services employees are busy. They're taking the time to, uh, to walk, uh, the new applicants through the process. And even though we are not open to the public right now, we remain closed through May seventeenth, we continue to ask, uh, the citizens and anyone else that needs our services to call, email, get in touch with us so we can continue to have government operations serving you, even though we are open, uh, to the, uh, to the public. I also want to remind everyone that the food bank is busier than it's ever been. Tuesdays and Fridays from ten AM to twelve o'clock noon, they are serving, uh, everyone a cup. Just about every week, uh, that ends is a depleted pantry for the food bank, and we're really calling upon our, uh, our residents to, uh, to contribute because that's really the only way, the financial donations and actual food donations that we can continue the pantry, uh, for no cost. So if you have some things that you can donate, they would like to have those on Tuesdays and Fridays as well, but they would take those from seven thirty until ten, and then the bank would open at ten to noon, uh, right to noon for those, uh, donations to be given out. You know, we're all in this together. Business owners are struggling. They have, uh, taken advantage, uh, some of them, I suppose, have taken advantage of some federal programs that have been offered to them to help the business, uh, in its operation and also the payroll for those who may have been promoted or temporarily laid off. I'd like to announce and, and challenge, uh, everyone in the county to, uh, take Friday and use it as an opportunity to eat out. I know, uh, you've probably been doing that quite a bit over the last, uh, last few weeks, but Friday is takeout day for our restaurants in the, in our county. There's a number of restaurants that you can find on our website that are participating. Many of them are offering some specials. They're offering some unique things that, uh, that are on their menu. But more importantly, a surrogate income to any of these restaurants really go a long way in helping the employees who are working there. Uh, there are, uh, those that are open, uh, start at breakfast, and then most of them are open for lunch and dinner. So if you would just take one meal on Friday and go, uh, purchase it by way of takeout, you'll be making a big difference in restaurants throughout Prince George County. Mr. Chairman, you've been hearing a lot about testing. That's a national issue. It certainly is a state issue. And, uh, we have a testing site that's nearby to us that's at the Rite Aid on the Boulevard in Colonial Heights. They are taking, uh, appointments. If you have a symptom, can't just go get tested without having a symptom, but if you have a symptom, they will, uh, test you for the, uh, for the virus, and then they will direct you appropriately where, uh, you will need to go after that. We, uh, have also offered about a dozen county employees to assist the health of the district with contact tracing. Uh, they're putting together that program now. There's obviously a lot of legwork that has to be done. Whenever someone does contact the virus or come in contact with the virus, the first thing is to find out who they have been around, uh, within, I believe, it's a three-day period, I think I heard that. They don't have the employee base to be able to keep up with the volume. So all the local counties in the area have chipped in, uh, labor. And, um, we appreciate the employees who have, uh, who have agreed to do that. And, uh, they haven't participated yet. As I said, the program is formulating, but as more and more testing is done, there's going to be more and more, uh, identifications and more contact tracing that will be needed. So, uh, we'll keep you updated on, uh, on that, but I would encourage everyone to use the Rite Aid at the Boulevard because it's a resource for you as lo, as well as previously mentioned on, uh, the Southside Region has had, uh, has had a tent pop up, uh, since, uh, the virus broke. And then there's a number of private doctors, like, facilities like Prime Care that have also been testing their patients, uh, if you have symptoms. Mr. Chairman, uh, you have the remainder of my report. I do want to offer sympathy to, uh, to three families that suffered losses here in the last week or so. Uh, one of our employee, former employees, he had just retired, called. A longtime mechanic in our garage. He, uh, he sent his body in just a few weeks ago and, uh, for health-related reasons, he passed. Community advocates that many of us know, and then Tracy Calpharo. Tracy worked very closely with hospice in the region, but he was also part of a number of different, uh, different groups and organizations. Uh, we lost him. And then the tragic, uh, car accident on April the eighteenth in the early morning hours that, uh, our, uh, school teacher. She, uh, they're having virtual memorial services for her this week. School community is, is gathering at one time and then I believe they're reaching out to, uh, to the public in general. I'll try to get you information on that as it, uh, as it came. That concludes my report. All right, thank you very much. Very much appreciated. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, uh, we move into your board. This is Bert that's here to talk to us about.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Witten. I'm here to talk about the 2020 farmer market. Not getting off to a great start this year. We were supposed to open up on May second, but we, we have asked for a little bit of a delay. Uh, I asked Mr. Ashcraft if we could delay it, um, to the public until, uh, June thirteenth for opening under the pavilion. Uh, we plan to, to use, uh, social distancing for that. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the plan and what's going on for 2020. What I've done is I've reached out to vendors who have sent me their applications wanting to be part of the farmer's market this year. And we tried to think of ways that, that we could benefit, you know, and help those people who, that's, that's what they do, they sell their products, and they're trying to get their fresh, fresh product out there. Uh, so what we thought about was, we started exploring, what are other markets doing? A lot of them are using a platform called Lulu's. And Lulu's, um, after talking to the vendors, we came with the finance department, and i- it's a great platform. However, it would overcomplicate things, and our vendors are small, and they're not looking to overcomplicate the way they have to do business. I would require fifty-nine forms. Uh, we'd have to send them ten ninety-nines at the end of the, the farmer's market, and they're just not interested in that. Um, so the next, the next thing I started to think about was, well, then how can I create an online order guide for them, uh, for pre-orders? Uh, so what I'd like to do and what I'd like to ask permission to do is, is to move forward in creating it, which I've already kind of started the process with a few vendors. Uh, what we would do is list their business. We would list the products they're selling, pictures of the products, prices of the products. And then I'm going to work with the IT department to try to develop a form that we can link into that order guide to where they submit order and pre-order. It would come directly to me, and then on Thursday nights, I would work with vendors, get the products ready for Saturday curbside pickup, and that would start the week of May eleventh. Uh, what I did was I put their, um, pickup on May eleventh, it's actually the sixteenth, because that's Saturday. I would like to start at the week of the eleventh for the pre-order service. Um, curbside pickup with payment at that time. Um, so we limit the contact between the vendor, the customers, but it's still getting the product out to our system. Some of the other things, uh, in that is, uh, the, the opening of the day of market would still be June thirteenth. And adhering to social distancing, there are a lot of markets that are operating that way, under executive order three from the governor. And as long as there's no more than ten customers at a time, one entry point to the market, uh, one exit point, and no touching. So we have to get away from the browsing in the market, uh, but that's something I can work ahead of time with the vendors and let them know. Uh, we can still propose October thirty-first to be the last day of the market, uh, the only day being closed this year will be July fourth. Then their fees would remain unchanged this year, ten dollars per table. Uh, for those people who are Farm Bureau members, uh, as long as they are presenting their current card along with their application, we can still honor that Farm Bureau membership for those people. Um, extra events could be canceled this year due to COVID-19, so all extracurricular, unfortunately, that I was really thinking out of the box this year for the market and some things that we could do, but that includes story time, um, food trucks, uh, any kind of children's activities like went on last year, we just wouldn't do it this year. But next year can be amazing. We'll do great things next year. We just got to get through this year. Um, so my next steps would be, just kind of here in order, is to complete the pre-ordering publication with the order form. Uh, I would like to then submit an article to the newspaper, uh, to talk about what our system would be for the online pre-orders, curbside pickup. Um, next, we would plan to open the market on June thirteenth, as long as nothing changes, uh, with government orders. Ten people at a time. Um, we have updated by fresh, by local paper, um, to make sure that we've removed the old farmer's market manager, and we kind of left that generic. I didn't feel like we needed to list a market manager. Obviously, we have all contact information in the good email that's generic. That way, if the market manager of the change, we don't have the need to have to worry about that. Um, flyers, I, I would still like to do some flyers on the businesses that are open, and that's really just introducing not only that we're going to continue to have the market this year, but that we're offering that pre-order curbside pickup. And, um, the website, Facebook page, we both have links into the pre-order form. So even if we open up on June thirteenth, we're not going to stop that pre-order system. We want to continue to allow that to those people who just aren't comfortable shopping at the market. We want them to have that flexibility. We work with vendors ahead of time, we'll have their product ready, um, and curbside pickup even with, uh, an open market on June thirteenth. So that would be the goal. Um, I just kind of give you a little snippet there of what the front cover of the pre-order guide looks like, what it started to design. Um, I, I've got about five vendors in already. I'll take this opportunity and answer any questions I have.
I have one question. You say ten customers, so of course, that doesn't include the
vendors.
The vendors.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, they're allowing ten customers, not including vendors. Uh, but there will be some restrictions. We will ask that all of our vendors wear face masks. Uh, we, we will ask for as much prepackaged item as we could get, uh, so there's not a lot of hands-on and touching. Uh, we'll have some extra things in place for wiping down our devices for our credit debit. PDT, I'm working on getting a new PDT machine, uh, through wearing it. It's, it's really free. Um, so I'm working on all of that right now to, to be able to continue that, but we'll be, we'll definitely be adhering to restrictions that we're under.
We see, we, we said, like, you give, who's, who's saying, uh, as a picture of.
Good job.
Good job.
I mean, I, I applaud you for thinking outside the box. I'm with, like, the don't like to go to the store anyway. I like to go to the store online, so you'll see me using the pre-order.
Very good.
Other questions? Mr. Webb?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Webb. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Drury, uh, he's, he is. Quarterly financial report, ma'am.
Money, lady.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, board members, Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Witten. Um, it's time for the quarterly report again, and mind what a difference a quarter makes.
Yeah.
That's all we have. A hard copy of this presentation was left at your places along with a summary financial report, revenues and expenditures, and an accounting of our health insurance on balance and the split between the county and schools. So this report is for the quarter ended March thirty-first, the third quarter of our fiscal year, which ends on June thirtieth. Uh, the first page of this, uh, provides you with a general fund summary of revenues. Our revenues on a percentage base for this quarter are on target and very similar to revenue collections on a percentage base, um, basis, uh, from last March, March of twenty nineteen. And of course, they exceed those collections, um, on a percentage basis, uh, from March of twenty eighteen. Uh, we do have some concerns, of course, with our collection for the last quarter of the year due to the pandemic. Um, I'll get, dig a little deeper into those details, and we've already shared some information, uh, with you. But net of our planned use of fund balance, uh, we still think that we are going to collect what we budgeted for FY twenty. So that is good news. The fund balance commitment has not changed since the last quarter, but I wanted to provide the board with a refresher of what the commitments are. Of course, our purchase orders, uh, both county and schools that were opening on June thirtieth and the general fund and the school operating fund, you allowed carryover, as well as our general fund grant reappropriations. Um, in addition, you appropriated a million dollars for the new elementary school design. New Walt, um, school carryover request that was funded was just over seven hundred and four thousand dollars. And then the, uh, county, um, approved appropriation, uh, for three positions that make your deputy chair and assistant commonwealth secretary and an apparatus technician for the garage, and those totaled just under one hundred and ten, all told. Um, the commitments for the county were right at five hundred and forty thousand, or twenty-two point six percent of that, and school reappropriations or appropriations were, um, over one point eight five million and represents seventy-seven percent of that. Um, we shared this summary with you at your April ninth budget work session, but we do anticipate about a one point four million dollar impact, um, from COVID. Um, everything from our, our real and personal property tax collections and mobile home taxes, just with those taxpayers who may not be able to pay on time or by your extended deadline, uh, for June with the waiver of penalty and interest through the end of August. Um, additionally, we think we'll, um, take a reduction in penalty and interest and administrative fees on those collections. Our sales tax. Our sales tax will be impacted, um, as well as our utility taxes, uh, B-hole taxes will be slightly impacted with late fees, um, motor vehicle licenses as well, uh, which are billed with our personal property taxes. Uh, we anticipate a reduction in our court clerk fees as the courts close, however, a number of those things do come through mail and the clerk of circuit court is still open for this. Um, lodging taxes, which were already sluggish, of course, we're expecting, uh, very little collections for the last quarter. Um, we refunded a great number of recreation fees for this fiscal year and our, um, uh, fingerprinting for the police department as well as special events collections are essentially non-existent. EMS transport fees are down, um, and interest rates are down, so therefore our interest revenue will likely lag, um, and other miscellaneous revenues will fall. Our expenditures are on target, uh, we are at 71.7% as compared to 73.7% the same time last year. Um, again, we are on target, don't have any particular areas of concern. Last year, I mean, we faced the, um, issue of our Riverside jail, um, being above what we budgeted as NSA. Neither of those things are a concern for this year or a significant concern, so that is good news. Um, we are working with our social services director, our special education, um, department from the school division, the CSA coordinator and Mr. Witten, um, as along with, um, Ms. Parrot in my office. We have another meeting on Friday, we had a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about private school place, Mr. Hunter is very familiar as he sits on the CPMT. Um, you know, we have a number of students who are doing distance learning, very similar to our regular population, but we have some private day placements and the severity level of some of those student disabilities are such that those parents or caregivers have declined participation, so we are working on negotiating a lower rate so that we're not paying that full tuition for that student who might be receiving services or who are receiving very limited services. Again, we, if we pay less, we will recover less from the state. There are a number of school divisions throughout the Commonwealth, so they're paying the entire thing because they don't want to lose a slot for their students and we certainly don't want to jeopardize their student slots and services.
That's all being read.
It is, yes, sir. Uh, the next slide, um, questions on the general fund before I move to you, tell us.
I got your question.
Yes, sir.
I know the state can't make your mind, just those programs trying to figure what the impacts are, it looks like it's pretty significant. You got a crystal ball guess when we might get some idea because that's going to also impact schools, just like you just said, as far as what we pay versus what we get from the state on, on any funding.
Yes, sir.
We've already been hit because we have a double A grade credit rating, so we already get a little, get a little hit from that, just being, being that good, but.
Wait, we're not, I I'm not sure when we'll get finalized information. I know the school division, I had a call with Dr. Penny Cuff and Ms. Barnes this morning as a matter of fact, to talk, talk through the potential local contribution changes as well as to talk to them about the landscape. Um, they're getting very little concrete direction, of course, the state legislators and the state superintendent doesn't know what the ultimate impact will be, but I know they are very concerned with their sales tax, uh, they receive a portion of, of state sales tax as well as their lottery funds, lottery sales are down. Um, lottery is largely used for school operations now, so, so they're bracing for, um, some significant impacts. Um, Ms. Barnes indicated that she would be sharing her best estimates with their, with the school board possibly on Monday night, they have a regular meeting scheduled for them, but we all, we, we need their updated budget to adopt our county total budget too. Um, so I think there were some concerns also that we are not adopting on May 12th as planned because they would like to issue future contracts. Um, I explained to them that the board had, um, elected a, a prior law leading to delay those decisions by at least one meeting date. Um, so, so there were some concerns about, about being able to issue future contracts.
From what you just stated, fully, we're, we're all in this, we're trying to keep all the employees whole, but I mean, we can't control what it is. At 1.48, did you create data, that's a little bit, uh, concerning.
Right, we, we don't have, um, any updated state estimates. I'll continue to work with Ms. Douglas, uh, with social services and to contact our folks at, um, DCJS about our household 599 funding, but, but we, we don't have any updates at this time.
I got one up. Yes, very good. Impacts from regional jail, that was over 500 something dollars we had to do last quarter for the, uh, the beds, you know? Where, where are they at? Or you're on, because you're on that, that committee. But that's another thing, we don't have much choice on either when it comes to that.
The dollar amount through me.
Yeah, the dollar.
I know we, uh, you know, they increased their per diem, which obviously was, was an increase our amount for next year. They're wrestling with, uh, occupancy because of Chesapeake. That's still, that's what hurt us last year, they, and it continues to, to do, so. Uh, they're in between superintendents, they're doing a search right now. It's, it, it's not stable.
Has there, has there been any discussion on possibly shutting the pod down? You don't need the beds, why, why try to?
Well.
Are you paying?
I think they have consolidated, uh, so I don't know if they have had to shut any down from what I've been told, but they have reduced, uh, when they're not using them, obviously they don't put two or three in one area, they, they have tried to keep it together, but now, uh, and we're fortunate that there's no COVID-19 outbreaks over there like in some places. So I believe they are trying to be associated with this thing as much as.
I know, I know, that's out of our control, I just was curious, just like I know social services and some of the things that is mandated and all, but we, we have no say in saying that, well, technically we don't have a say, we're obligated to do the right thing and provide the money.
I'm not so done with Ms. Reed, but I anticipate us getting a check, um, Riverside jail, very similar to what we did last year and having to turn around appropriated and send it right back to them as a one-time contribution. I would anticipate we, we will get that and I'll certainly follow up with Ms. Reed by email. I think she might be working from home quite a bit with the pandemic.
I know you got a lot of, I'm just curious, this thing running through my mind, I don't know, here it slides, you're out of, of the service.
Right, well, we have projected about $157,000 increase for Riverside jail in the 21 budget and that is, like you said, it's not something we have a choice in. So, so again, our, our contribution for 21 will be $157,000 more than it is in this year's budget.
Okay, thank you, that's a lot.
Utilities, um, their, uh, operating revenues are on target, 79% collections, very similar to, uh, collections last year on a percentage basis. Um, and our water and sewer fees collected are very similar in dollars to what we collected at the same, same time last quarter. Um, expenditures are at 62.3% as compared to 62.9, um, last year, so again, our, our operating income is very comparable to what it was last year. Um, of course depreciation is never posted until, uh, the last quarter of the year or after year-end as a matter of fact, so, so that's a sizable number up to 700,000 plus. Um, non-operating, very similar story, um, one area or a couple of areas that we are down are our water and sewer connection charges. Those are on, at 20 and 25% respectively. So, uh, Mr. Halton has reduced those revenue projections for FY21 and, and what he requested and, and what we will ask you to consider for adoption. So, so that is one area that, that we are down for. Uh, but all, all, overall, our, um, income is, is healthy.
I know, I know where it's going to lie, but like I said before, and I know when, when it's projected, we're going to be okay through 20. However, the more we can do now may help us avert what we may have to be forced to do when we get into a new budget and we can always do, do a revised, but we're mandated by say, we got to get, I get that, we got to get to about 26, got to do balance, but we can always come back and do a revised budget once we get out of the woods and think and we don't have a recurrence like Mr. Hunter mentioned, like the CDC is projecting in the fall. We can always come back and do a revised budget and come back and pick items up that we cannot afford to do right now.
Mr. Reed, on the, uh, connect fees, you know, being down and, and, I mean, should be asking Mr. Holt for this, is it potentially those could be down a little bit based on some of the changes we made to, uh, the ordinance and stuff?
I'm not positive, I've not had an opportunity to discuss in great detail with them. I can certainly talk to him tomorrow and we can shoot your follow-up email.
Okay, I was just, I know we changed the, you know, whether it was within some media of a distance you'd have to connect, so.
But I think you projected where we suggested that change, that there would be somewhat of a loss of revenue.
Right.
And it, it could be some larger one-time connections that we received in the prior fiscal years and all that, that might be missing from the complement this year, which I'll follow up with him, we will provide you with that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Okay, capital projects, I shared, um, this listing with you at last week's, uh, budget work session, I did not dial it back to March 31st, that I figured it was useful to give you information earlier than what you received last week. So again, this is a listing of the capital projects, um, we've again completed the courthouse renovation, that will come off the list before, um, we receive the next quarterly report. Broadband, we discussed that, uh, this evening, that will be coming to you at your, uh, next regular meeting. Um, our radio project remains underway, um, burn development, burn building, it will be on hold, um, indefinitely. Our, our CDC software and assessor software replacements are on, on, in, in progress and nearly complete, nearing completion. Um, our central wellness center building upgrades are in design, um, but as with feedback that we received from you, we may hold on, on taking any action to build those projects out after the design is complete. Our volunteer fire department crew building entrance upgrades, I'm still waiting on final pricing, um, for Mr. Purvis and, uh, Fire EMS for all of the buildings. Um, uh, our 156 and food line water system upgrades, um, uh, the food line system water upgrades are out to bid, um, Mr. Halton should be bringing you a recommendation on that very soon and, uh, Route 156 is nearly, uh, ready to bid.
You mentioned both of those in his.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, again, update earlier.
As I'm, here's the, uh.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, well, we did a borrowing, a general fund borrowing to, to help finance those projects.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, Scott Park restroom making concession stand, um, that, um, bid IFB for assembly of the kit that is on order will be coming to you on May 12th, those bids did close, um, on the 23rd and we will have a recommendation for you at your next regular meeting. Uh, the Jefferson Park fire station is in design, um, and, uh, the last several items are, are either on order or nearing completion. Uh, the next slide provides you with school CIP projects, again, repetitive from what you received last week. Um, tourism fund, um, our lodging tax revenue, um, at March 31st of this year is actually less, um, than what we had collected the same time last year, so our collections were already sluggish, but they're down by 23,000 and we think that will be impacted by about 108,000, uh, due to the pandemic. So again, we're bracing, uh, for, for impact on that. Um, we had already appropriated, uh, some use of fund balance in the tourism fund to purchase the new county welcome signs as well as make some improvements in preparation with the Dixie World Series softball series that will be held summer after next. So again, we're, we're bracing to be able to do very little, uh, within the tourism fund next year, it's a minimal obligations. The economic development fund, our, uh, meals tax revenues are better on a dollar basis than where we were last year, um, 65.5%, however, we're bracing to not receive about 334,000 that we thought we would before COVID-19. Uh, we do have a healthy fund balance, um, within the economic development fund, but, um, we will be dropping, uh, that in our adopted budget too and, and providing you with an overview of what we plan or recommend to change prior to adoption. Proffers, it looks exactly the same as it did on June 30th, uh, we've not collected any proffer, uh, revenue since FY17. Um, I believe you'll be getting some, uh, projects that could have proffers tied to them in the near future, however, our balance remains at 100,000. Red flags, um, at March 31st, our collections were just under 8900. I'm expecting little to no collections for the rest of the year as schools are closed and buses are on the road with students. Um, so, so again, we will, uh, collect about half of what we did last year.
When is that, when it goes to school?
It does, it goes right into, we quarterly, we transfer it to the CIP, um, on a quarterly basis into the school bus line. Yes, sir, it takes quite a while to build up enough to buy a bus, but again, it's more about student safety than it is about purchasing buses. Health insurance, uh, health insurance fund balance is very healthy, we're at 3.35 million on March 31st compared to 2.4 million this time last year. Um, as the board knows, in FY19, our premiums exceeded claims, um, by, um, $783,000, which was good. This year, our premiums exceed claims by 865,000 plus at March 31st. The fund balance of 3.35 million is split between county and schools, 35, 65% roughly. The amounts are noted and read at the bottom of this slide. Looking ahead, uh, we are closely monitoring our budget actual and we will continue, uh, to do so. Our port, purchase order cutoff date has been communicated to department heads and staff that's a couple of weeks earlier than normal to try to get a handle on spending. There are some essential items that do have to be ordered between now and June 30th. Um, but, uh, but that cutoff date has been set, uh, for next week. Uh, we will be working shortly with our auditors to set preliminary test work, uh, which will be interesting this year, I'm suspecting that we will have to do a great deal of that electronically and remotely. We already provided a great deal of information electronically, but, um, they may have to conduct essentially the entire audit off-site. Um, our FY21, um, budget finalization is underway, you have a work session tomorrow night, um, which will be bringing you some, um, expenditure reductions, I believe there are about 40 general fund expenditure reductions that are related to COVID-19 as well as removing the B-hole and permit fee, um, rate increases. Uh, we would like to hold the budget public hearing on May 12th with adoption following on May 26th, should we have all the information we need to make the adoption. Any questions I can answer?
Well, like, didn't you just mention something about school, possibly having something to us before the, the May 12th event, we, or they're going to try.
We're hopeful, um, um, I, I mentioned to Ms. Barnes that, that it would be helpful to be able to advertise, um, an adjusted budget, I know you're interested in doing that, you don't want me to advertise the proposed budget for our public hearing, I do have to do that very soon though, uh, we, we have to advertise it at least seven days, has it be in the paper seven days before the hearing?
And then we push y'all back against the wall, so to speak.
All right, so, so Monday, I, I'm hoping maybe Monday after Monday, you will get some updated information from her and, and maybe work with her a little bit later this week to get a preview of what they might be, um, talking with their board about.
Yeah, I'm sure the teachers and everybody else, if this is concerned with everybody else.
Right, yes, sir, yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, good, thank you. Let's wait back, any questions?
I am, Mr. Reed.
No, no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have is a table item from previous meeting, that's, uh, adoption of a solar energy self-insidy policy. I think probably you have a recommendation possibly to extend that, uh, table or post own item to July 14th. Yeah. Or the only meeting that we have.
Or the only meeting that we have.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for a table item to be tabled until our July 14th.
That was second to that. But I don't see them a second. We have any discussion? Do we hear the motion this way, Matt? This way, Matt, there's a motion on the table to postpone the table item, the resolution to of the solar energy policy to postpone that to the July 14th meeting.
Okay, I think that's a good idea because we have some bills that were passed from General Assembly, we don't know what they contain.
That's correct, and the public can't have opportunity to review it. So here, here, that you have any comment? We have a motion in a second. No comment? Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mrs. Waymack? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes, it'll be continued to July 14th. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Under the order of business, we have a resolution proposed to revision of the personal personnel policy.
Yes, sir. Good evening again. So what I've got here tonight is a revision, just a very slight revision to the discipline of employees' policy under section 29.2. We would like to just revise that from being a six-month period for record counseling to be a 12-month period to be able to retain that a little bit longer in the minute that we may need to refer back to it during that evaluation period.
That's what I'm adjusting to. So I'm adjusting to what I'm always there with.
Yeah, I'm hearing that this is this is a discussion with the General, like, emotionally except the resolution divided. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second to adopt the resolution that presented. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Waymack?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael? Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hury. A2, resolution proposal revised, Chris George County Personal Policy Section 5.1 to 5.0 Hiring.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have some some revisions and we also have an addition to that policy. The first change we've got there is under the interviewing and I apologize, it looks like a strike through, but you'll see that the language above it is the same language that was stricken. So I do apologize for that. I do want it to to just state that the highlight of their yellow, the director verifying each candidate that they would like to hold interviews for, that they actually hold the certifications that their job description requires them to have. So it's not something we stated previously. We'd like to revise our policy to say that. Section 5.8, we just made a slight revision there. Just that I would offer an offer letter to the candidates and then to down to a form of a higher date starting salary and indicating the date and time they should report to work orientation. Be surprised, but people won't show up on orientation day and say they haven't been told. So we'll make sure that we put that in writing for them, so that they have a problem. Section 512, you just want to add the language that unless their directors instructed them to come to HR directly for orientation, and that again is for clarification on an issue that we had with a new hire. And then lastly, I'm not going to try to go through this whole thing, but section 5.19 is the new internship addition into the policy. And the reason that was put in place is because as we tried to work through whether or not the board wanted to offer summer internships again this year, I did receive feedback back from the board and I tried to implement all that the board asked for in this policy. I did use a couple of samples from other counties and how to handle it. In addition, what I would do is create an internship application that that would be used for in the future to to assist with this policy. So again, I didn't want to go through it all, but I know you probably had an opportunity to review it. So I would like to take the opportunity and ask any questions.
I think you, we've asked once already to accommodate me having an intern that's not a county resident or going to school in the county because a lot of times the VCU people that are taking Homeland Security and such are the prime ones, plus they get student credit for being an intern with Fire EMS and working with emergency management. And I think you've accommodated that in there and I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, that was under section 5.2 of the number five. Originally, we said we wanted them to be a county resident, but because of that concern, we we said preferred.
Right, and I appreciate that because where a few county residents are taking those classes.
Yes.
We have a report, Mr. Chairman, on that same 5.2. And you're stating that this is why I answered, understand, that for, that's no county employee even with school side?
A county employee. The school is a different, they're under a different DIN numbers, so they're separate. Yes.
So they have the same language in there?
I don't know that the school has an internship policy, sir.
When you say immediate, as far as that stretch out?
The thought process with that is to follow the same as we do with bereavement. So when we allow bereavement, three days of bereavement, it's for the immediate family member which is identified in policy. So we would use that same example for immediate. So it would be mother, father, sister, brother. It does not include uncle because those are not immediate. Grandparent is immediate. They do consider that immediate in the policy. So it would be immediate.
Last year, my granddaughter kept school for the parks wreck and I think they gave her a minimum to do that. Would that be considered a internship or is that?
Honestly, if if it was paid or something, it wouldn't have been an internship. It would have been part-time employment. However, we would still want to follow the nepotism policy when it comes to any immediate family member of the board. So we want to be careful not to cross lines on nepotism versus internship.
Mr. Chairman, does that, yes, I clarify, county employee says it's not included constitutionally.
I'm going to say it depends on what the MOU was for the adoption of this personnel policy. I think there's always been some, maybe some misunderstanding. I I'm still going through records that are in my office that were long before me. I have yet to find an MOU that says that the county constitutional officers follow our personnel policies. However, I do want to state that when it comes to our leave time, when it comes to the way we pay out our benefits, when it comes to the dual enrollment discounts, you know, everything that's covered in our policy manual, they benefit from. So as far as following each and every policy, I think there's always some misinterpretation as to what they should or shouldn't follow. Most constitutional officers do follow what is in our policy. However, when it comes to things like that, there can be blurred lines and I would recommend if if we can't put our hands on an MOU, that that be a topic of discussion when it comes to our policy.
I think it should be consistent. I think it should be consistent, Bert, everybody.
And and I just want to state that what I've seen here in the county is we have employees come here from example, Petersburg. And Petersburg constitutional officers, a great example was Circuit Court Clerk's Office had an employee start here and they continue to battle with Petersburg because Petersburg wouldn't give them payouts of comp time or anything else, which, you know, that's that's just usually not the law that you don't pay out comp time because it's our minimum overtime. So I think there was a battle between Petersburg and the constitutional officers employed because they did not pay that out because they did not adhere to the policies of Petersburg. However, we give those benefits to all constitutional officers and employees. And because of that, I think it would be really beneficial to have some of you in place for that.
Yeah, I think part of that understanding is the fact that we supplement almost all of the constitutional officers, employees or deputies or whatever you want to classify them as to some degree. So therefore.
Some are 100%.
If we're if we're supplementing that to whatever degree it is, it seems they would be subject to our laws.
Yes, sir. And I did speak with Mr. Witten a couple of weeks ago. We talked about this same topic and whether or not they follow policy. And I know that he was going to have Ms. Turner research in in the office to see if they could find an MOU in place as well. So I'm in the process of going through files now and I know that he's he's probably asked her to go ahead and use the same. Absolutely.
But do you want us to?
Definitely something we need to talk about.
Would you like us to take action on this tonight or would you like us to pass it to you if I ask a question?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would prefer that you table the thing that's made. I don't think constitutional officers have got a chance to weigh in on that provision. Yeah, I'd like to prepare it for.
I did have.
What the expectation might be. I don't, I don't, we've been this, we usually have had meetings in the past.
Right.
We really haven't been able to do that as much as we'd like. I don't think it's a good.
So whenever you tell me to bring it back up, let's pop.
And I do just want to clarify for you, though, that there is no language in this policy that says ends of constitutional officers. It was originally there and I removed it because we were unclear at that time of whether or not you're following our policies. I understand if you want to table the policy, but at the same time, if we put an MOU in place that they do or do not follow policies, it wouldn't require any language change to say constitutional officers because if it says employees and they adhere to it with the MOU, there would be no need for revision.
Let me ask you, do they have their own set of policies?
There are some that have SOPs within in their departments and there's some county departments that have SOPs. I know Patina Coghill has them. I know the police department, Fire EMS have them as well. So sometimes their policy may be a little bit more stringent than our policy and they follow that, especially in public safety. So it would not require, just want to state, it will not require any language change.
Really, Mr. Chairman, I'm referring more to the to the provision about interns.
Yes.
Because I do know there have been family members of constitutional officers who work in those offices. I just don't know without them being aware of it. It's nothing that will hurt if we if we postpone it for a few weeks. Yeah, let you get one over unless somebody's opposed.
If if there's a question on the intern piece, I I would like to see us approve the other items that are in there and continue, I mean, because can we approve part of it?
It's better to wait and take what the whole.
Okay, okay.
Since that's.
I'll take that right. That's fine.
In relationship to, what do you want? Do you want a month?
Um, I don't think we need a month. I think that just Mr. Witten and I can put a little pressure on trying to see if there's an MOU and if there's not, I'm sure that he could draft something that that would be appropriate.
So next business meeting?
I think that's.
What is that? Maybe what? Maybe well. I'll tell you what's made, well, the motion is down.
Motion, second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Did you hear it, Ms. Waymack?
I did, I did. I'm okay with that.
All right, no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael? Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mrs. Waymack?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Hury. A3, resolution to authority to advertise a public hearing for setting a tax rate for real property. Personal property machines and tools and mobile home.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Witten. I'm coming before you this evening to request authority to advertise a public hearing on your tax rates, which include real estate, personal property tax, machinery and tools tax, mobile home tax. We are asking that those rates be advertised at the same rates as they are in FY20, with real property being 86 cents for $100 assessed value, personal property at $4.25 for $100 assessed value, machinery and tools at 150 and mobile homes at 86, the same as real property. As you are aware, Mr. Ashcraft proposed the budget on February 25th and called for no increase in the tax rate. However, our assessed values did increase to the degree needed to cover construction of the new elementary school and another, a number of other initiatives that we'll propose. Things have changed certainly since the budget was proposed. And we will be discussing with you tomorrow evening, reducing the general fund budget by nearly 1.4 million below what was proposed due to not only COVID-19, but because of removing the proposed B-hole tax increase and permit fee increases for FY21. So the, there are items that were proposed at FY21 that we have no choice in having an increase for. The largest single item is a contribution to your debt reserve of 1,262,500. That covers the cost of a new Walton Elementary School and other proposed county and school capital projects, which you could certainly alter. There is also an increase, as I mentioned earlier this evening, to Riverside Jewel of nearly $157,000, more than what we have this year. Our IT exchange online moving to the cloud, that added cost will be over $64,500 of an increase. We have some contract contractual services for the Emergency 911 Center, ACC, that will total nearly 49,000 more than they do this year. There is a need to replace server, VMware and host server for about $20,000. Our VRS rate is increasing with our current complement of employees. That's nearly a $52,000 increase. Food life insurance, about $4,100. Workers' comp will increase about $61,000 in the general fund alone. The General Assembly approved some changes in cancers that are covered for our first responders and has also approved post-traumatic stress disorder. The governor has yet to sign the PSTV, but did sign the other into action and that had a significant impact on our workers' comp as well as our line of duty coverage, which will increase by over 12,000. Our crater detention is going to increase by nearly 26,000. Our utility costs, we've analyzed those with between electricity, heat, water and sewer, a lower $29,000 increase. And then our comprehensive, our Comprehensive Services Act or Child Services Act expenditures will increase by $55,000. So so again, we are asking for the authority to advertise the property tax rates at the same rate.
And I think if we advertise that, that means we can't go higher. We can certainly lower, but that's the desire of the board.
Yes.
You need us a date to do that? What would the date be of your choice?
To have the public hearing on the tax rates?
Yes.
On May 12th.
May 12th.
And adoption would usually follows that night. You know, I mentioned the timeline for preparing the personal property book in particular, that even with the June 26th due date on personal property taxes, adopting on May 12th will will allow a pretty tight turnaround time.
Yeah, as Mr. Webb said, we're hoping to hear something from the schools to help us with that decision as well. Okay, with that in mind, I'm going to take a motion to give through the authority to advertise May 12th for the public hearing for the set of actually. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the rates that are in front of us to be advertised and and it's been said by some members that, like you said, we can't go higher on these rates, but we can also go lower. And we have members that would like to continue through our budget process to see if we can redo some of these if at all possible. And they've been clear in their comments that they can continue making comments tonight. But if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion we approve to advertise the rates in front of us.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You hear it, Ms. Waymack?
I do, of course.
Could call the roll, please.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mrs. Waymack?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Hury. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And we have a resolution to award the contract to utilities for resilient assessment versus response plan updates.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and the board. In twenty eighteen, the Americas Water Infrastructure Act was passed, requiring community water systems to perform a risk and resilience assessment, along with that, an update to our emergency response. So the county is now required to update the utilities emergency plan to certify situation with EPA related in the six months after the resilience assessment certification is complete. This work is required only of our central system, and this is where we serve more than thousand customers, not two thousand.